All right, welcome everyone back to our afternoon budget session. We'll just wait another moment to see if, let's see who I'm gonna mention. Commissioner Moody will be joining us a little bit late. And then there's Commissioner Isasi. Is City Clerk with us? Or did he head back over to the conference?
Mr. Kane is substituting for City Clerk. The whole clerk staff is at the conference.
Okay, great. Good to know. All right. And there's Commissioner Lanier. So yes, so I know that we were all informed of this before, but there's our clerk. And he's at Van Andel at the conference, I see. So as you all know, we have the International Clerks Association here in Grand Rapids. We're hosting their annual conference and our city clerk has been instrumental in helping make that happen. So he's over there running the show. But we're gonna enter into our afternoon budget session. We have a couple really important topics before us today. So what I'd like to do is just hand it over to our city manager. Now that this meeting is called to order, we'll have the budget workshop, an opportunity for public comment. We'll adjourn and then we will go back into executive session. So with that, I will turn to our city manager.
Thank you, Mayor. And again, thank you, Commissioners, for your time this morning. We want to continue the conversation around FY22 fiscal plan this afternoon. We have a series of speakers that are lined up this afternoon, but since we have a little bit more time, I will suggest we take a pause probably halfway through the presentation and I'll just read everyone's attentiveness to see if that's okay. And then we'll entertain questions and then move to the balance of the presentation. We'll start with update overview of legislative affairs as it relates to economic recovery. Then we'll continue the conversation into housing and homelessness and specifically talk about both things that we're doing in our regular operating budget and how we might anticipate taking some advantage of the funds that we've been appropriated directly as well as what's in our ecosystem, if you will, within the county and metropolitan area for relief for housing and rental support. Then we'll also talk about some of the other recovery efforts that we have planned. And you had specifically requested information around the cannabis industry and what's in the budget. So with that, I'll turn it over to Ms. Karen Ferret.
Thank you, City Manager. And I just wanted to provide a brief update on some of the things that are coming in from the federal government. Lou, if you could advance to the next slide, please. Thank you. President Biden and Congress have been working together to provide emergency relief and ongoing investment in critical areas of need. And as you all, I think, are aware at this point, the American Rescue Plan was signed into law and provides direct funding to states and municipalities, fundings for vaccines and distribution, and direct aid to families, among other things. And then there have been announcements recently on the American Jobs Plan. And this is a $2 trillion plan put forward by President Biden for critical investment in infrastructure initiatives. And just recently, I believe it was less than two weeks ago, the American Families Plan was announced by President Biden. And that's $1.8 trillion to provide direct aid to families and children. And it's a combination of tax cuts and investments. Next slide, please. And so I just wanted to drill down a little bit further into each of those and speak a little bit about the American Rescue Plan, which does provide $350 billion in new federal fiscal assistance for states and municipalities. And the city is estimated to receive $94 million from that amount over two fiscal years. The U.S. Department of Treasury did just release the guidance finally yesterday afternoon on that allocation. And so city staff continues to go through those guidelines just to see, you know, what restrictions or guidelines might be in place on those dollars. The American Rescue Plan also provides $7.25 billion for the paycheck protection program for businesses, $2.5 billion in emergency rental assistance, $400 million for support to homeless services providers, eviction prevention assistance, and utility shut-off prevention assistance, $300 million in relief for firefighters across two FEMA programs. And then also the shuttered venues operators grant, which provides emergency assistance for eligible venues affected by the COVID-19 pandemic as follows. There's over $16 billion in grants to shuttered venues. And grants can be up to 45% of the gross earned revenue. And there is $2 billion reserved for eligible applicants with up to 50 full-time employees. And then next, I just wanted to talk just very briefly about the American Jobs Plan, which is President Biden's plan to provide over $2 trillion for infrastructure initiatives and would include the following highlights. $621 billion towards transportation infrastructure and resilience, which includes roads, ports, and transit. And $174 billion for the investment in vehicle electrification. There's $213 billion to develop and preserve more than 2 million affordable and sustainable places to live. And $111 billion for clean drinking water infrastructure, $100 billion for broadband, and $100 billion for improving electric grid systems. And then finally, the American Families Plan that was just released by President Biden would provide direct aid to families and children and is a combination of tax cuts and investments. And here are some highlights. Two free years of community college for millions of Americans, universal access to high-quality, free pre-K for three- and four-year-olds, an increase of up to approximately $1,400 in Pell Grants and allowing Dreamers to access that funding, ensuring that no one earning under 150% of the state median income pays more than 7% of their income on high-quality childcare for children under five. It would provide comprehensive paid family and medical leave, and finally would expand tax credits for workers and families.
So I'll introduce the Housing and Homelessness category, and then we'll move on. And I'll be assisted today by Ryan Kilpatrick and Kanyah Bahaj. Next slide, please. So as the city manager said and is represented on this slide, there's over $100 million in the Housing and Homelessness ecosystem in Kent County. The city's fiscal '22 budget contributes $19.5 million of that investment. In terms of what's happening through the Community Development Department, you can see that we invest in housing code compliance. It keeps the quality of our housing stock in good shape. Lead-based paint is a significant investment of $1.2 million. The Neighborhood Investment Plan that includes our Community Development Black Grant, home grants which support housing development, emergency shelter grants and solution grants, I should say, and then the Justice Assistant Grants all help to move housing forward. And the largest investments there are increasing affordable housing supply, $1.4 million, and improving the condition of existing housing at $2.98 million. Then also in the Community Development Department, we have the Homeless Coordinator, which is the second-year investment for that position, and then a new position for additional housing and lead staff support. Other city departments and initiatives include the Housing Practice Leader, which is, you'll hear from Mr. Kilpatrick later in this presentation, the creation of the Housing Fund, which we briefed you on, you'll hear a little bit more about today, working through the state land bank to maintain properties that are under its control, our hot team, water bill assistance, and the refuse mileage subsidized work that we do for households that needed in the refugee service. And so all that together, along with money coming from the federal government, totals about $100 million. Next slide. Now I'll turn it to Mr. Kilpatrick.
Thank you, Rick. Good afternoon. I'm going to provide a very brief update, or actually review of the Housing Needs Assessment data as context for the next couple of slides. So just a quick reminder, we conducted the Housing Needs Assessment over the course of last year. This included some pandemic-related data, but mostly this is pre-pandemic related. We knew at the time the Housing Needs Assessment was released in June of 2020 that we had roughly 25,000 households in Grand Rapids who were cost-burdened, meaning they were spending more than 30% of their household income on housing. We also knew the households of color are most likely to be cost-burdened as compared to white households, and less likely to be homeowners. We found that homeowners, on average, are spending much less than 20% of their income on housing, whereas renters, more than half of all renters are spending more than 30% of their income on housing. And lastly, we discovered that, we knew anecdotally that there was a significant demand for more housing, but we got a lot more specific in terms of the data. So we now know that we need roughly 5,300 additional rental units between now and 2025, and roughly 3,500 additional for-sale units. And the lack of housing supply overall is one of our root causes for a lack of affordability. And so we need to focus on all of the elements of stability, supply, and subsidy, but supply is really a critical element along the way. So that, in 2021, I want to give you a rough understanding of what it costs to build new construction, because going forward, as we talk about housing supply, we really want to support that, but we need to be realistic about what that costs. And so in order to ensure that a portion of that new supply is affordable, we've got to be realistic about where our costs come from, where the financing comes from, and how we make up those differences. So when we talk about rental supply, if we're talking about apartments, roughly in the marketplace today, it costs between $150 and $200,000 per residential apartment to build new. This assumes that this is the baseline costs. So when we're talking about more complicated urban sites that require dewatering or environmental costs or additional legal, these costs per unit go up. So when we divide those costs over the course of 12 months in a 10- to 15-year investment cycle, this is why we're seeing new apartments coming online at $1,000 a month and more, because it is expensive to build today. Similarly, when we look at the cost to build new for-sale product, whether it's a single-family detached or attached, the lowest price point that we've seen in the market as of late is about $235,000 for a relatively small unit. The average is closer to $285,000 to $290,000, with traditional single-family detached homes on larger lots being closer to $325,000. So this isn't to be a wet blanket. It's frankly to be realistic about where we are in terms of construction costs today. Lumber is up over 200% over the last year. We do anticipate that some of those material costs begin to come down as we emerge from pandemic-related staffing and we see an uptick in production in materials and an uptick in labor supply. But as we really focus on how do we bring more supply to market, we want to be very honest with you about what the cost of construction is today. And so we're going to have to think about how do we leverage every tool in the toolbox in order to get more supply online and in order to ensure that a share of that new supply is affordable. Next slide, please. So looking at 2020 in terms of housing production, this data was prepared by John Overman in the Development Services Department. You can see here the total number of units that have been constructed between the portion of 2020 after July 1st and now the first few months of 2021. We have 624 total units that have been approved and are currently in development, with 406 of those new and 218 are remodeled or renovated, and roughly 100 of those units being income-restricted in one way or another. There's another set of units that are in the pre-approval process that you all remember going through, the Lytech application process that have been submitted for financing. So we anticipate there being an allocation of additional tax credits for more income-restricted units later this year, but this is our tally so far as of this point in the fiscal year. Next slide, please. So this data is coming from the Economic Development Team, gives you a better sense of the total number of housing units in each project and the level of support that has been provided by the Economic Development Team. You're seeing here certain types of incentives, whether it's the Department of Environment in Great Lakes or Eagle providing a grant, the Economic Development Corporation Bonds, Brownfield TIF, Obsolete Property Redevelopment Act abatements, or Brownfield combined with Neighborhood Enterprise Zones. There have been a lot of units that have been supported in one way or another by the Economic Development Team, a total of 396 units. 50 of those are income-restricted at 60% AMI or below. Another 346 units have not been income-restricted. But even those units at market rate are critical to the overall conversation. We've got to make sure we've got both market rate and income-restricted units entering into the system, because there's fierce competition out there right now. And with inadequate supply, it's those households with the most income to spend who are out competing everybody else. Next slide, please. So as you'll recall, we've been talking about the re-establishment of the Housing Fund, that that fund would be managed under a fiduciary relationship by the Grand Rapids Community Foundation, but overseen in terms of its spending priorities by an appointed board by the City Commission and the Normal Appointments Committee process. The initial seed funding there is estimated to be $900,000, with a short-term goal by 2025 of $20 million or more. We have recommended an 11-member board to represent the community interests. We anticipate that that board should have a deep background in both housing and finance, and that will include lived experience. And we want to make sure that we're prioritizing the use of limited funds over time to achieve a maximum impact while continuing to grow the fund. So we've got to balance the priority of increasing the size of that fund so that we can maximum leverage those dollars in the future while simultaneously dealing with the pressing issues that we have on the table today. So we'll really need to make sure that we've got strong partnerships with the Housing Commission, with our nonprofit partners, the Brownfield Redevelopment Authority, and our for-profit developers, while also aligning with city staffing departments across the board. So our early priorities, as we go into the process of defining and selecting potential board members, we want to make sure that we're prioritizing homeowner assistance. Homeownership is going to be a theme going forward, that we're also prioritizing gap financing for priority projects that have been supported by neighborhoods, and that we're prioritizing the acquisition and pre-development for nonprofit partners who can get more work done if they have the funding available to do it. Next slide, please. So preserving existing affordable housing while growing the overall housing supply, these are important objectives that we've got to balance and continue to carry forward simultaneously. So we do still have some naturally occurring affordable housing across the city in every neighborhood, and making sure that we're leveraging our financial incentives to make sure that we're preserving existing affordability where we can, and simultaneously providing support for new housing supply at every price point. We want to make sure that we are not supporting additional displacement, but we do need to be sure that we're adding additional supply to provide for all of those households that want to live within the city of Grand Rapids. So this includes continuing to actively support new Lytech investments. City staff has really been incredible in terms of the way that they have supported Lytech applications in the past, from the Planning Department to Community Development and Economic Development. The way that they have streamlined the process to support Lytech developers has been outstanding. Grand Rapids is one of the leaders in the state in terms of leveraging those tax credit projects. We want to continue to do that going forward. Also, we want to be able to utilize publicly-owned land to support additional housing. That's going to include both land bank-owned properties as well as other city-owned properties that aren't being utilized for other uses, and then establish that dedicated source of funding to support greater affordability as we do all of those things above. So that's where that Housing Fund comes in. It can be the gap filler in a lot of these projects. Next slide, please. Prioritizing homeownership opportunities, especially in neighborhoods of focus. This is one of those things that I think we need to spend a lot more time on over the coming year and the following years. I think we heard this both from Commissioners as well as from the community. I've been out giving presentations to every one of the neighborhood associations, and we hear this a lot, that homeownership opportunities is a priority. So part of this is to establish both five-year and 10-year goals for homeownership among black and brown households, and to align the resources that we have in order to achieve equitable outcomes as it relates to homeownership. We also want to leverage those city-controlled funds to support existing homeowners as well as first-time homebuyers in neighborhoods of focus. That means all of that great work that community development is doing, in addition to conversations we've had about improving energy efficiency and talking about adding opportunities for accessory dwelling units as a secondary source of income that simultaneously provides more housing supply. We've been friendly calling this the Whole Homes Initiative, but we want to spend some more time in this coming year to really talk about how do we package all of these tools together so that our homeowners and future homeowners in neighborhoods of focus and across the city have the ability to leverage all of those tools to maximize benefit and affordability. And then lastly, we also want to think about how do we enhance the opportunities for wealth creation for households of color and developers of color and neighborhoods of focus and across the city, to be sure that we're leveraging opportunities to both create new housing supply while simultaneously preserving affordability and creating opportunities for wealth creation for people of color in the city. These are going to be critical goals that we've got to hold simultaneously, and that we can leverage a lot of different priorities all at once. Next slide, please. So in terms of implementation, we really want to be looking at those land bank lots. Economic Development Team has been looking at a lot of opportunities to get some of those lots off the books and into the hands of both for-profit and nonprofit developers, provided that we're meeting the city's goals and criteria. Really want to make sure that, again, we're thinking about homeownership for low and moderate-income households, as well as some rental opportunities. We do need more rental opportunities in addition to homeownership. So deploying those limited housing fund resources to ensure priority projects are fully funded, this is going to be another critical goal going forward. We'll focus on acquisition, on gap financing, and on homeownership. But then we'll also need to think about where do we have opportunities while we're working on the master plan to establish incremental adjustments to the zoning ordinance, near transit corridors and high-traffic corridors, where we can allow more small-scale and missing-middle development opportunities, make those simpler to execute on while still supporting the goals and objectives of the neighborhood. And lastly, where we can, we want to either offset or eliminate those city development costs when they're related to utility connections or development fees on affordable housing projects, whether it's homeownership or rental projects. To the extent that we can either offset or eliminate those costs, all the better. Next slide, please. So going forward, part of the work that Housing Next is proposing to do over the next fiscal year is to work to initiate that affordable housing preservation strategy, to really think about how do we make sure that that naturally occurring affordable housing that still exists in our neighborhoods can be maintained. All the ways that we can support the master plan update process, walking alongside the Planning Department and the neighborhood organizations to clearly understand the housing data that we have available to us, and the myriad of opportunities we have to implement on preserving affordability while adding more housing supply, working alongside city staff to stand up the Housing Fund, to make sure that we've got a fully experienced board appointed and that they understand the opportunities and challenges ahead of us, catalyzing new housing supply at all price points. This is working with city leadership at all levels to ensure that additional housing supply is coming online as quickly as we need it to, leveraging public property to achieve citywide and neighborhood goals. We've been evaluating all of the publicly-owned property across the city, determining where do we have opportunities to leverage that property in order to get more housing supply. And then, of course, working seamlessly with all of our departments, jumping in where asked, providing updates whenever necessary, and then thinking through where do we have new opportunities that crop up either as a result of federal funding or as a result of local needs, and just being on call as needed. And I think we're ready to go on to the next slide and our next presenter.
Thank you, Ryan. The Community Development Department works with developers and supports affordable housing in a variety of ways. Core activities include facilitating the city's annual investments of Community Development Lot Grant and Home Investment Partnerships Program Funds that provide gap financing to a number of projects. Staff also evaluate applications for the Payment in Lieu of Taxes Program, which is important to securing low-income housing tax credits from the Michigan State Housing Development Authority. Here are all of the projects in FY20 and 21 that received funding and/or obtained a pilot from the city. From FY20 through fiscal year 21, year-to-date, 289 affordable housing units have been completed and 423 are underway. There's another 18 that are planned in FY22. And the next slide shows photos of a few of these projects that are in our community and underway. Next slide, please. Thank you. The city's pilot ordinance was changed in 2018. This allowed developers to elect one of two options for their payment in lieu of taxes terms. The first is receiving a 4% pilot, and the second is to receive a 1% pilot and make a contribution to, a 2% contribution to the Affordable Housing Fund. Since the ordinance was amended, 36 pilots were conditionally approved, and of those 13 are currently on the pilot role and have contributed nearly $23,000 to the Affordable Housing Fund. The Community Development Department also works to preserve housing stock, housing affordability, and safety through operation of our housing rehabilitation programs. A total of 72 homes have been improved so far in FY21, with 49 of those receiving lead-based paint remediation, making their homes lead-safe. By the end of the fiscal year, it's anticipated that another 26 units will be completed, and 10 of those will address lead-based paint hazards. The FY22 budget includes additional staffing for the Community Development Department to support a variety of activities focused on lead and affordable housing. This includes facilitating modification of the rental property certification program to include lead-based paint inspections, to work to attract and retain lead abatement and residential construction contractors for our programs, because with the current market, contractors are very difficult to come by as, right now, with a lot of work going on in the community, and also to enhance education awareness of lead remediation programs, making sure that the community is aware of the programs that we have available within our, from the city and elsewhere to take advantage of, to actively work on resource development and policy advocacy related to these issues, and then to also work with the Economic Development Department to establish a compliance monitoring program for non-federally-funded affordable housing projects, so that we can ensure that we can maintain affordable housing to projects that we aren't necessarily putting our federal resources in. Next slide, please. We know that affordable and safe housing is key to addressing issues of homelessness along with having along with having access to supportive services. So the city, in particular, the Community Development Department actively engages in work with community partners to address homelessness issues. Here's some data trend, trends on homelessness in Kent County. You can see that the total number of persons experiencing homelessness has steadily risen from 2016. Peaked in 2019 and is showing a drop in 2020. Next slide, please. This slide shows trends in the homeless point in time, or what's also known as the pit count from 2016 to 2001. The federal government requires our local housing continuum of care to conduct an annual count. This occurred on January 27th this year. And the intent is to count all persons who are unsheltered and those who are in emergency and in transitional housing. In FY '22, or sorry, in the FY '22 budget? The city's making significant investment in responding to homelessness. There's $1.5 million of American Rescue Plan Act funds planned to support the homeless outreach team. Chief Lehman and Chief Payne highlighted this work in their presentations last week. They have three teams working since March? And have social workers and a recovery coach embedded on those teams? Through a partnership with Network 180. The combined budget for police and fire is $1.1 million. And the contract with Network 180 is just over $400,000. Annual investments of federal program funds was completed on April 27th. So nearly $775,000 of community development block grant, emergency solutions grants, and home investment partnership funds will support eviction prevention, rapid rehousing, and short-term rental assistance? The upcoming fiscal year. The city will also continue to support the homelessness coordinator position in the Community Development Department. Ms. Britton performs a variety of work, including supporting the HOT team and our internal homelessness work group. She's assisted in coordinating with community partners for services and program initiatives. Some examples of this work has been the Monroe Center Target Outreach Project? That was a partnership with Community Rebuilders? Participating in a number of committees for implementation of the FUSE initiative that's led by Dwelling Place? And working with the Kent County Health Department to establish COVID vaccine clinics for homeless persons? Since last fall, Ms. Britton has been successful in conduct, in coordinating a number of city services? And responses? And preparation? And preparing an action plan for our internal work group? She's established an ongoing partnership between our community-based street outreach work group and our HOT team. The group comprises community service providers that conduct street outreach for their homeless clients. And she's really worked to help them establish a relationship? So that the HOT, so that our HOT team can also provide support to their outreach efforts. She's developed a landing page on the city's website, prepared frequently asked question documents, and city responses for, to a variety of issues related to homelessness. And she has supported the development of the HOT dashboard? With help from Zach Teal and Becky Jo Clever. And this slide shows you some data points that are being tracked by HOT through this dashboard? This is the first quarter of the outcome measurements. Of particular significance here, I believe, is the top row. The first two boxes indicate the number of persons that are diverted from jail and emergency departments, which we know come with a high systems cost? For accessing those services? HOT team interventions also supported referrals for mental health services and substance use disorder treatment. Next slide, please. As mentioned previously, the city engages in a number of community and systems initiatives addressing homelessness. Two of those initiatives include FUSE and Built for Zero. FUSE is an initiative led by Dwelling Place to target the highest users of high-cost services? Like emergency rooms, jails, shelters, and clinics? The approach establishes a by-name list of individuals using Medicaid and the homeless management information systems data? To move individuals into permanent supportive housing? And to make sure that those with the most need are able to access those services? Built for Zero is a new initiative just getting started with the Coalition to End Homelessness. This is a four-year engagement with Community Solutions, which is a nonprofit? That has assisted more than 80 communities across the country. Our community will focus on achieving functional zero for the chronically homeless population. And this initiative also uses a by-name list to target resources to those with the highest need. And in doing so, it will also allow us to maintain real-time data. In the current fiscal year, the city invested $3.2 million in housing and homelessness through the Economic Resiliency and Recovery Investment Strategy. This slide highlights projects that received funding in round one of those investments. And they're focused on housing security efforts such as providing emergency shelter, rent and utility, and eviction prevention assistance, and rapid rehousing, and street outreach services for homeless persons. Mortgage foreclosure counseling and tenant eviction legal services are also being provided in the community. And the Lulucha Fund? Which has been completed at this point, has provided rent and mortgage assistance to undocumented persons. Other existing and new resources for housing and homelessness include the Emergency Rental Assistance Program funded through the United States Treasury. The state of Michigan received $622 million. This is a program that's being administered through the Michigan State Housing Development Authority. And they refer to it as CERA, COVID Emergency Rental Assistance. Kent County, which includes residents of Grand Rapids, have act, has a reserve of $40 million. And since April 7th, when the program portal was available and launched? There's been 679 applications. And 70% of those are Grand Rapids residents. And $900,000 has been paid out today. It's my understanding that every day, more and more applications are pouring into that portal? So, that was information as of last week, and I'm sure there's more since then. The, also, the American Recovery Plan Act? Has a Round Two ERA Award allocation in there? And the state of Michigan anticipates receiving $50 million, oh, sorry, $500 million through that program? Which would plan for Kent County, and again, including Grand Rapids residents, to receive access to $35 million in that Round Two program. The American Recovery Plan Act also has homelessness assistance and supportive services program reserve of $5 billion for states and local governments. They are using the home investment partnership formula to allocate those resources. The city of Grand Rapids recently received our notification that we will receive $4.6 million directly for this program. So that's significantly more than our annual allocation for home dollars that we receive from the federal government. And this is specific to provide housing, shelter, and supportive services for, even though it's the home program, but it's specific for addressing issues of homelessness? Including development of affordable housing specifically for that population? We received our notification, but we are, cannot move forward until we receive more information on the, what they call the implementing notice that, that the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development provides? And that is anticipated to be here by fall. So collectively, housing and homelessness, just from the investments that we've just talked about? Come to nearly $1 million? When you consider the city's investments and, and these additional American Rescue Plan Act dollars? Other resources that we know are in the American Recovery Act plan? But we are not sure exactly at this point how and when we may be able to access those, but believe that our community will be able to take advantage of them? Is, there are emergency housing vouchers? That, that are reserved in that plan? Five, $5 billion to public housing agencies? To provide approximately 70 million, I'm sorry, 70,000 emergency housing vouchers available nationwide? Our Housing Commission Director, Lindsay Reams, has just, just received notification that the Grand Rapids Housing Commission will be getting some of these vouchers? But there's not information of how many just yet. So she's working with the Coalition on Homelessness, the city, and others? In preparation for that award? There's homeowner assistance fund dollars also in this act? Nearly $10 billion. And it does have a minimum of $50 million for each state. Fair Housing Services are also outlined in the act? Up to $20 million. Those resources will be allocated by HUD directly to fair housing organizations? And we're hopeful that our local organization will receive some of those resources? Housing Counseling Services, there's $100 million in this act? Again, this is to support through HUD, approved housing counseling intermediary, intermediaries, state housing finance agencies? So, for example, MISTHA? And affiliates of neighbor works organizations? The low-income home energy assistance, there's $4.5 billion to states as well? So again, these are resources that we know are available in the act. And we will be keeping an eye on those to determine how our community may access and take advantage of those resources.
Thank you, Connie, Ryan, and Eric. Mayor, I think it would be appropriate if we pause now and see what questions you or commissioners may have before we move on to the balance of the presentation.
Yeah, thank, thank you, city manager. I, I have two questions I'll pose, and then I'll open it up to my colleagues around the commission. I, I also want to just say thank you to the presenters, but also for all the work that you've done this past year. I know many of us have been a part of a lot of these conversations as we look at how to support individuals struggling with housing? And individuals experiencing homelessness? So, thank you. Connie, I have a question on slide 32. I'm just, I'm curious about the difference in the amount awarded versus the amount expended? With some of these organizations that we're working with? I'm curious what the reason for that is? Obviously, we know that there's an urgent need. And then my, my second question, I'll just put them both out there. And maybe, Ryan, you can speak to this, or maybe it's a conversation I could follow up and have with the city manager? And that is, that is in looking at the potential strategies to help with the housing crisis and help get those housing units more affordable, especially around single-family homes? Over the past several years, there's been a lot of conversations about using Brownfield TIF? Particularly in partnership with some of the other tools and brading that together, even with land bank? And, you know, we've talked about a whole host of other, of other ideas. I know that there are some other cities? Because I have these conversations with mayors? Who are being very, very creative and using Brownfield TIF to make that gap? To really fill that gap? So I'm, I'm curious your thoughts on that? And if we really need to take a deeper dive into that? So, those are my two questions, and then I'll open up for my colleagues.
Okay, mayor, in regard to slide 32, I believe that's the one that's titled Housing and Homelessness Eris Investments? Is that correct? The, shows the investments? Okay. So, some of these, so we really, when we implemented some of these, the fundings and executed contracts? It was intended to look at other community resources? So some of them didn't start until January? So, for example, when you look at the Salvation Army Rent Assistance? Because they had the funds that came in from MISTHA for that particular service? And they had $2 million that they were working with? We tried to time it so that we, we thought there might be a lag between that rolling off? And the start of this, the ERA program, which launched in, in April? And so, we really were focusing on making sure that there was not a gap in services? So we staged the start of those contracts a little later? And also, keeping in mind that our reporting timeline just, is a little bit different than this meeting? So, we will be getting updates from organizations in terms of expenditures and units completed actually on the 15th of this month? So, we'll have new information there. But also then, when you look at services like rapid rehousing, for example? Community Rebuilders? You're building in work that is, you won't see the expense? Because it's a longer-term rental assistance that's being provided? So, we're actually reserving dollars that go into the future? So you're not going to see them expended until those rents have been paid? Does that make sense? So there's some timing issues there? But things seem to be relatively on pace based on their contracts. And then I should mention too, I guess, under emergency shelter, Community Rebuilders, there's the Bridge Housing. There's also a partnership with Family Promise? In that work as well for family sheltering? And so, and those relationships and contracts are just getting underway.
Thank you. Thank you, Connie. And Ryan, I don't know if you want to touch on that, or if that is really a larger conversation that we have after this budget session?
Yeah, so I think Brownfield TIF is a, is a critical tool. It's a big opportunity. The legislative language that exists today under Act 381? Is less than clear as to how eligible expenses can be reimbursed and when? There are absolutely communities that are getting creative with this? Muskegon being one? City of Grand Haven is one? Where we're completing a project right now with homes that will be for sale for $139,000 and up? So, there are opportunities, but I think that staff is clearly being very diligent about reviewing what is enabled within the existing legislation? And whether or not additional language may be necessary to make this a bit more clear?
Okay, well, maybe, I, I, okay, that's helpful. I'll, I'll follow up with city manager then, and maybe have a conversation? Because I know that there are cities, far more cities than just those two, and I'm sure you know as well? That are, that are using Brownfield TIF pretty creatively? And, and I recognize maybe that's a, a larger conversation as it comes to how we interpret the legislation?
Mayor, I would also add to Ryan's answer that we're using the local Brownfield Revolving Fund very creatively? To help lower the cost of development of Lytec developments, for example? And other, even scattered set housing? So, we have done very innovative work in that regard? And we're happy to have the conversation about the larger question.
Yeah, thanks, thanks, Eric. And I, and I do appreciate the revolving fund, and I'm, I'm glad that we have that to be able to use. But recognizing that the gap between the cost of construction and affordability? I think we're going to have to get much more aggressive with using every tool that we have at our disposal. So, thank you for that. Commissioners, other questions? Specific to what's been presented so far? Commissioner Lanier?
Thanks, mayor. I actually have the same question about slide 32, so I'll save that one. But Karen, I had a question on slide nine? And, I don't know if it's really tied to slide nine, but that was the last slide of, of your kind of sharing the American, the multiple acts and plans that have come from the federal government? So this was the American Families Plan? But I'm just curious to know, and I know you heard a lot of the CARES Act funding in summary last year? What's, what was the total amount of the CARES Act funding? And then what's the total of, I think you already have the total amount for all of the plans that are coming down for the ARPA dollars? So I'm just curious to know, like a comparison in dollars? And then the other question is? As we are receiving, as we're looking at so many of the grants and, and funds that are being distributed? I'm wondering if, how this will impact the dollars that we may not have received from businesses? For, for, for example, property taxes or personal property taxes? In other ways? I don't think it'll necessarily impact employee taxes because of... I don't think it'll necessarily impact employee taxes because of, because they weren't physically present, but I'm just wondering if there have been some outstanding personal property taxes that maybe if they received some of the grants. I'm thinking in particular the one for the shuttered venues. I know we've had a number of venues that have been closed for a significant amount of time, and I don't know if they have closed, or you know, if they're behind in taxes, but just curious to know if we're tying those two things together as the dollars are being disseminated across sectors as well as the dollars that we're getting.
Thank you, Commissioner. So I just want to, I'm going to have to get back with you on the CARES Act versus, I think you're looking for sort of the total amount that we may have received through CARES Act funding and various sources in comparison to the information I presented today on the American Rescue Plan, the Jobs Plan, and the Families Plan? Is that?
That's correct. And because our funding from CARES came through the county, it would be dollars that came to the community through the CARES Act funding.
Okay, we'll have to get back with you on that.
Okay.
And then, as far as, I'm not sure I totally understood, and I see the city manager is on as well, I'm not sure I understood the next part of your question as it related to funding that may be available through, like, the shuttered venues operators grant.
Probably more of a question, that one is probably more of a question for Molly, because, so what I'm thinking is, is businesses that have been impacted negatively by COVID, some of which have closed, but certainly they have been closed, you know, for a temporary amount of time, a significant amount of time. So I'm wondering if we have seen a loss in revenue because of that, that potentially, if they get the grant, they would be able to pay personal taxes, for example, that they weren't able to pay before because they didn't have the resources to do so because their businesses were closed. Molly, is that making sense?
Yeah, you're looking at losses, losses from our local businesses. I can get with our income tax administrator, see if we can extrapolate that, but again, I might not be able to do that until we close, you know, this tax year as well, because the data is, we're halfway through, you know, the pandemic as well. So, so, okay. Yeah, I'll see what I can dig up.
Yeah, I'm more curious than anything else. You know, I know we are looking at our own budget and looking at the dollars that we will receive as a city, but sometimes indirectly we'll receive dollars because, you know, businesses or families are now taken care of in other ways, so they can perhaps pay taxes, you know, property taxes and other things that they may not have been able to pay before in light of having access to funding in different ways.
Right, and we have seen the, you know, just generally, we have seen evidence of individual aid, you know, the stimulus payments that were paid to individuals, just evidence of that really helping, you know, individual residents of Grand Rapids, because our receivables actually didn't jump significantly or anything, which indicates that people are keeping up with their water, sewer bills, things like that, and taking advantage of the programs that have been offered in the past year.
Thank you.
Molly, while you're on, so just to be clear, so we, I thought we shared when we did the recapitulation earlier in your presentation around the CARES funding, all the funding that we received from CARES, FEMA, everything from the first round was roughly around a little over 20, 20 million or so, and about seven of that came from the county through our allocation that we got directly from the county. Is that accurate?
Correct. We received just under 6.5 million from the county, and we also received other CARES vehicles of funding, though, like the Public Safety, Public Health reimbursement program, that was from the state. There was the CBTRS replacement money, and that was also through the state. So we received CARES Act from multiple sources. So if you need a, if you'd like a refresher, though, of all the, what comprises of that approximately $20 million we receive, I can send that out to you commissioners, just so you have it.
Yeah, no, I was just wondering about the total amount. So if it was the 22 million, that's kind of what I was wondering as I was trying to compare this 94 million, like, how does it compare to those previous dollars? Thank you. Thanks, City Manager.
All right, Commissioners, any other questions or comments? Commissioner Ruppert, did I see your hand up?
No, but I will just make one comment. I just want to, I do want to affirm these strategies on Slide 19, these implementation strategies for increasing access to affordable housing and increasing homeownership. I just think that, I appreciate the breadth of them. Some of them are things that the city can do, some of them are things that we need to update in our code. I just like the thinking on that slide about that. But thanks, everybody, for the presentation.
Thanks, Commissioner. Commissioner Yussasi?
Thank you, Mayor. Thanks, thanks again for the presentations. I just have three questions. One, thanks, Karen, for, Ms. Faric, for the overview of the different funding, and I'd be interested to see that, I think, almost like a running total of what we received from last year, I guess that's calendar year, and then what we're, you know, potentially receiving in this next fiscal year would be great to have that kind of running total for comparison. So, but I also had a question on, as we think about these monies being expended into our community, Ms. Faric, is there any sort of models or any sort of idea of, do we, is there a data set where we could understand if the percentage of people in our, in the City of Grand Rapids who did receive the stimulus dollars, you know, what, there's three of them potentially, the third one maybe dependent on people's income? So is there any, is there any information that could share with us that, you know, a certain percentage in the City of Grand Rapids, you know, did receive that, or, you know, are there others who may have not received that funding yet?
That is a good question, and I am not sure if that information is available or not, because, you know, there are various reasons that maybe individuals may or may not have received, and so I just don't know if that information is available, but I can certainly look into it.
Okay, thank you. I mean, I think we've heard, you know, in my past employment, we were a tax preparation site, and so we saw more people this year really reach out to do taxes, to hopefully, you know, wanting to get that done for the stimulus. I know there are other organizations that were really actively involved, Kent County Tax Critic Coalition, Project Green, others that were really focused on making sure people understood what they were eligible to for them, the benefits that they were potentially receiving. So I think, even though we don't have purview over that, I think it's a good, another good piece to understand how our community is being impacted. So thank you. The second is from Ms. Bohatch. Thanks for the presentation. I know I was interested in the Sarah Dollars piece. Again, in past employment had asked, I think the database was still being developed at that time, sort of in late March, around if we're going to be able to tell, disaggregate, you know, where those applications were coming from out of the City of Grand Rapids. So we've talked quite a bit in all of these budget presentations and today about Neighborhoods of Focus and other areas. So do you know if there is that disaggregation capability available to understand out of that 70% of applicants in Grand Rapids?
So this is information that goes into, this is MISTHA's application portal, and they have the access to the data. I don't know the answer to that, but I can call and find out. I obtained the information just about Kent County versus City of Grand Rapids applications. So, but I can circle back and find out if they have that ability.
Okay. And then my last question was, thanks for sharing the dashboard where you had the diversions from, you know, the emergency room and jail stay. So certainly, I think we know the significant cost of both of those interventions with individuals. It has the total number of what was diverted, am I not, maybe I'm just not seeing it on the slides, it's not coming through well in the printed copy, does it have a total number that it's out of, like, what, what is that, the overall data piece that we're using? So what is the total, and then 17 out of whatever that might be? Or I think that was the number that I saw, I think, on the jail.
So I guess I would look at it in terms of, they have a total number of engagements in one of those boxes, which I think was 256. So that's how many, I guess, interactions in terms of engagements out in the community during that period of time. And then there's a larger number of like 800 and some individuals that they engaged with through that process. So I guess I wouldn't equate it to, I'm not sure if we can get you to the number, the correlation that you're looking for, but I think in terms of the types of interactions that they've had, and those that there were, could have potentially ended up and resulted in jail, that was the number that was diverted. I can go back and work with TME and members of the hot team to see if we, perhaps they do have that data, and we can look at it more deeply for you.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Jones?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you to all and your presentations. Ms. Faric, just if you could, was wondering if there's an update at all on the Land Bank legislation, trying to get some idea of how we're coming along with that process.
Thank you, yes, Commissioner. Actually, I just spoke with Bill Jackson this morning about that, and he is working with Representative Calley to get that moving forward and scheduled for committee. So we are working on that. And as soon as I have more information on that to share, I will certainly get that out to the Legislative Committee.
Very good, thank you. Thank you much. Mr. Kilpatrick, thank you again for your presentation. I just want to make mention, I think it's critically important for the public to fully understand the cost model, and I appreciate you including in the presentation the average baseline cost to construct a new apartment, as well as to construct a single-family home, which really speaks to the critical need for gap funding, as well as the strategic role of the housing fund. Because without those two things, obviously, we can't get to a place of providing opportunities for homeownership unless those two things, I think, are happening simultaneously. Also want to suggest, and this is probably for a later conversation, I think if ever there was a time to engage our financial institutions, it's probably now, obviously along with funders in our community, because when I think about gap funding, I think about, obviously, funders and their capacity to help with that, but also when I think about banks and just, again, their capacity to provide everything from special, or certain opportunities or tools that they can provide around both funding as well as mortgages. Because I'm excited about the potential of creating more homeownership opportunities, because we've never really had that opportunity for, at least for as long as I've actually been in town, and obviously for as long as I've been on the commission, there hasn't been, there's, what's been made available are really the housing opportunities for those who are, you know, obviously, medium to higher income, but very few opportunities for those who are either on a fixed income or on an income that's steadily increasing. It's just been rental opportunities. And so excited about what we can do in that space, and clearly, I think everybody's on the same page and want to see that come to fruition. And for Ms. Bohatch, just a quick question, a reminder for the public, the timeline, this is from page, or Slide 34, the timeline around using these dollars from the American Recovery Plan Act, just in general, I know that there may be some who think that we are on a limited timeline and only have it until the end of the year, but just wanted to put it out there in terms of the official timeline that we have.
So every, every program that's in there has a different timeline.
Okay.
And actually, the terminology, it should be labeled American Rescue Plan Act, I apologize. So that's the rescue plan. There's so many Acts, and, sorry, between recovery, rescue. And so, for example, the home dollars that will be coming through that Act, it's been made very clear that these are not to be considered emergency response, and so it's not necessarily tied to the pandemic. And those resources, we have until 2029 to spend. So all these different little pots of money that's in this Act has with it its own timeframes. So it's, it's all over the place.
Well, if you could.
Most of them go pretty, go out into the future pretty significantly.
Yeah, that was my question, because I just want to make it clear that this is obviously very different than what was in place under the previous administration, where the dollars had to be used by the end of the calendar year, which I think for some, it felt like there were decisions that were being made that were just about getting money out the door and weren't the most strategic. Whereas this year, we have an opportunity to be very thoughtful, very strategic, which leads me to another question that maybe perhaps the city manager can answer, and that is opportunities to engage in partnership with the county, because it's safe to assume, again, that they are also getting dollars, right, for the, with regards to the Act, or the, these dollars from the Biden administration. And yet, they're not necessarily obligated to provide those dollars to the city. So just wondering what that looks like. And I've yet to take a look to see how much the county gets. I've been trying to do my homework, because I know that there's a great disparity between our beloved community and the 3-1-3, and what they're getting, as well as other cities. But just wondering if you could speak to that, City Manager.
Thank you, Commissioner Jones, for those questions. Let me just amend, add to Ms. Bohatch's response on the timeliness. So just for clarification, on the $94 million that we had proposed using for revenue substitution, we have until December 24 to spend those funds directly. And so there may be other entitlement funding that we're getting from HUD and other areas, as I said, that may have different timeframes on expending. In terms of the collaboration with Kent County, I think we, I've been in a couple of meetings with the county administrator, and it's clear to me, they're not in a, they're in assessment mode, as it appears, they're not in a planning, spending mode, their budget cycle's different. They recognize many local units of government have received direct appropriations, and so I'm not aware of, I've been in part of many meetings in the community along with at least county administrator, and people have asked around a collective economic development or recovery approach, or collective approach on other issues, it might be broadband or fiber, or even in social justice issues. Actually, we've been part of several conversations around that and increasing economic opportunity. So I'm not aware of a hardcore plan with deadlines or anything coming out of the county at this point. We certainly had discussions about it. I think part of what I've heard is the recognition that there's going to be some leadership transition in the county, and I think the mayor may have also had similar conversations with the board chair around their intended uses as well. So I say all that to say, I don't know.
I'll just add to what the city manager said, just in case you all didn't know. So what's been allocated to Kent County is $127 million, just so you have a sense of how much our county will be getting. But obviously, in addition to that, as the city manager said, other cities and townships and villages will also get a small allocation based on population and a number of other factors for the formula. And then what I've heard so far from the county is that they're going to hopefully get through the hiring process for new county executive, and then they'll come up with a deliberative, thoughtful process, knowing that they have until the end of the year in 2024, and they don't have that rush that they had last year with CARES funding. So I'd say to be, to be seen what they determine for their process.
Let's make an amendment to that. Now, what we just shared on the, can you pull up that last slide, Santi, on the ERA, Round 1 and Round 2? That is collaborative. That does reflect a collaborative approach countywide. That does reflect a collaborative approach countywide. Because if we received our direct allocation, I think we would have only gotten, instead of, the city could have gotten around $6 million or so. And because we collaborated, deferred to the issue of housing in countywide, we're able to get $40 million. That is an increased leverage amount. And the same with the round two. I think our, we could have gotten, what was that amount, Ms. Bohach, around four or five million?
4.7 million.
4.7 million directly. And because we said, no, we wanted to take a countywide approach, it's 35 million. But we know that a lot of people in need are disproportionately people who are in the urban area, urban core. So that is an example of our collaboration together that resulted in better outcomes.
And I guess it should be mentioned too, that Kent County could have also received a direct allocation of those ERA funds, just like the city. And collectively, we made that decision so that we could access the state program so that there's more benefit to all of Kent County residents.
But that is separate, to your point, separate from the $127 million direct appropriation that they're receiving.
Correct.
Thank you much. Mayor, might I suggest that we have some sort of communication that's posted that really speaks to some examples around how those home dollars can be spent? I know it specifies provide housing, shelter, and supportive services for persons experiencing or at risk of homelessness includes developing affordable housing. I just think that the more that we can communicate rather clearly what those dollars can be used for, I think that will help in the ongoing conversation with the community regarding homelessness and, you know, what we have available, what we have available, perhaps what the county has available. Just, just so we can do what we can to have folks on the same page in terms of understanding this is what we have to work with.
Yeah, yeah, that's a, that's a good idea, Commissioner. And I believe some of that conversation already started when we were allocated the CERA funds for the community and United Way is taking the lead on allocating and getting those dollars out the door. So we can, we can follow up on that. That's, that's a good idea.
In regard to the home ARP funds, so again, the guidance coming will come from HUD by this fall. So we'll have more understanding of any waivers that they put in place. Because in order for those dollars to work within the home program structure, the way that it's been allocated, what some of the activities that they would like to see communities be doing doesn't fit within the home statutes and regulations. So there's waivers that will need to be issued. And so again, all that guidance is really critical for us to figure out how we can really use those funds when it comes time to allocate those. And also, we know that Kent County will be receiving $3.3 million of those same resources to, for, of home dollars as well.
Thanks, Connie. All right, Commissioners, any final questions or comments before we move on? All right, I'll turn it back to the city manager for our next two presentations.
Hey, Mayor, thank you. We'll continue the discussion and talk about economic recovery as well as cannabis. We'll end on a high. Okay. Wake up, wake up. I'll keep my day job. Okay, Mr. DeLong?
Hi.
Oh, Connie, I'm sorry.
Sorry. So the Economic Resiliency Recovery Work Group, so we're going to start the economic portion of the presentation. The city manager established the Economic Resiliency Recovery Work Group as part of our emergency management response structure for the pandemic. The team was charged with responding to crisis to support resident and business resiliency and to focus on recovery to go back better once the pandemic passed.
Connie, I'm gonna interrupt you, but somebody's not.
Mute Mr. Bergman, please.
Okay, somebody's muted. I can't hear them.
Tim Bergman, can you?
Is that Tim?
I think whoever is holding the mute can mute Mr. Bergman.
Went to the ready-together families and then also utilized through.
Okay, can someone get a hold of, who is that? Is it Tim?
I'm touching him now.
Okay.
How about all him?
Added shift and change based on the audience. So that was ready together. And then also within that era is.
I'm sorry, city manager, it's not allowing me to mute him.
With the conversations with Black River and transition, some of those being based on so really transition from preschool to kindergarten teachers.
Calling him.
And then getting to it, some of the pages.
City manager, can we move him from panelist?
Yeah, that's what I was gonna suggest to Mayor. He's removed him from the meeting.
Yeah.
City clerk is at the commission. There we go.
Okay, thank you. All right.
Getting interesting. I was listening in.
All right, Connie, take it away.
Okay, so as part of that work, the work group was charged also with establishing a framework to invest existing and new city resources to respond to the emergency and then to support recovery efforts. The framework was developed on guiding principles that focused on collaboration, identifying and filling gaps, keeping equitable investment in the forefront and to have a direct connectivity to local, to support local and rapid response. Investments were made under four impact areas, resident resiliency, business resiliency and recovery, community reactivation and transportation and infrastructure. And in FY '21, there was $750,000 that was prioritized for third ward equity investments under the first three impact areas. $6.8 million of city resources was accumulated for round one of investments. This was primarily supported by Federal CARES Act funding through the Community Development Block Grant and Emergency Solutions Coronavirus Supplemental Awards. Other sources included reprogrammed CDBG funds from previous year, parking and mobility programs, the Neighborhood Match Fund, as well as new and re-appropriate General Operating Fund support. This slide shows the breakdown around one investments by impact areas. So there was $4.2 million allocated for resident resiliency, $2.4 million for business resiliency and recovery, and $230,000 for community reactivation efforts. Under community reactivation, the bridge was successful in supporting more than 60 events occurring late August through early October. And outdoor activation was also a key component in terms of supporting a number of community businesses. There were nine social zones that were established to help increase, that helped increase pedestrian, pedestrian, pedestrian traffic in the downtown areas. And DGRI provided grants to businesses that helped equip them for outdoor services during the winter to activate those spaces. And the use of social zones has been extended through November 1st of this year. And Mr. App is working with neighborhood businesses on establishing additional zones and districts through his role as the retail retention and attraction specialist. That's a nice long title. So we are in the process of round two of our ERS investments. This allocates an additional $1.2 million of the CDBG CV funds, and it's known as CV III program. Mr. DeLong provided an overview of these investments last week in his presentation in the workshop last week as well. But his plan to continue to support a variety of activities that support health and safety measures for homeless persons, in particular in our high-traffic community spaces and at shelters, continued some support for small businesses, providing community reactivation efforts through pop-up markets and neighborhoods, establishing or supporting neighborhood learning hubs, or continued education enhancement for the learning gap that's occurred, as well as mental health services for uninsured and underinsured residents. And neighborhood cleanups, something that our Public Services Department does have some budget for on an annual basis. But this will allow them to provide more service and to help clean out from those who have, maybe did not have the resources to get big items out of, out of their, out of their homes and garages and things like that. And then we also are supporting additional activities for our park ambassadors and summer camps at four parks in, in the community this summer, starting in June.
Thank you, Connie. Now, let's move on. But before we do, I want to say that we did receive some feedback regarding the presentation last week. And we're, we have that under advisement as it pertains to round two of ERS investments. We appreciate your, your feedback on that. So now, looking forward, what are we doing to operationalize equitable economic development? And how do we do that in the best possible way? So, you know, the recent planning efforts have really provided a solid framework for moving forward. The South Town Business Area Specific Plan was one of the first efforts of that nature. Then we've got the Grand Rapids Equitable Economic Development and Mobility Strategic Plan, and then Division United. All of those, plus the ERS investments, provide a platform for moving forward, we believe. Excellent. So we've also done work with Concierge and Business Advisor Services. And we did that work for several years through fiscal 2020. And you can see the organizations that were involved in that with us. And we did, they did some good work. Through the resource-constricted fiscal '21 budget and the uncertainty during the COVID, those contracts were not renewed, but we did pivot to another type of business assistance. And that was to help secure resources and also applicants for our business grant program. And our partners pivoted with us through that, through the pandemic, and helped us with that service and did a really good job. During that time, they also, some of them also were engaged in the River Equity Project and other activities. But, you know, we were, we had to pivot and, and we did. And people kind of pivoted with us as we went. So as we, as we move forward, we've been working on policy based on the plans that we've adopted and completed. So the Inclusion Plan for Economic Development Incentives that Mr. Garcia talked about today is a direct result of the Equitable Economic Development and Mobility Plan. And that's in place now and is producing really good results already. The River Equity Plan is widely regarded as an awesome effort by staff who were involved in that and also by the community. And we've increased through that program the number of MLBEs that are registered considerably. I think we're up to around 80 total MLBEs now, which is almost doubling the number that we have. The, we've got a local business purchasing incentive in place, our MLB construction program, also the VITA, the Voluntary Economic Development, which in its most recent form, it comes through as the Boston Square Initial Voluntary Equitable Development and Community Partnership Agreement, which is helping drive that project forward. We're also investing in infrastructure. So the first two projects you see here, Evergreen and Fuller, Evergreen Street and Fuller Avenue, are directly related to the Boston Square Together Development. And we'll provide that infrastructure as part of the, our commitment to helping that project be successful. Also, we'll be doing work on Guided Tree Avenue, Lake Eastbrook Boulevard, which some people may say, well, why is that listed? And you know that the, the work that we're doing around Center Point Mall, but also the housing community that Center Point serves, and Lake Eastbrook serves, is really important to us. We want to make sure we have good facilities there. And then there are other, other streets as well. Next slide. So as we move forward, you know, the ERS investments that we've talked about now over the last two, two meetings are the first step. So we've done the small business grants. We're recommending that we do seasonal pop-up markets and implement those this year. We're working on how to support MLB businesses and at what level. And also the COVID Business Adaptation Program. And if you look at even a step back, the BRIP grants that we've done in the past, all those are examples of first steps in recovery and reinvestment. Now, as we move forward, what we are recommending is that we consider an ARPA investment of $500,000 as a next level of investment, and that we would consider that as part of the post-budget process. What we suggest that we consider is renewing investment in the delivery of proven economic development service organizations, concierge services directly to small businesses within our, within our neighborhood or improvement authorities and within, within our business community. And that we also can, we begin to pilot other tools to accelerate equitable development outcomes in those areas. So with that, I'd like to turn it to Ms. Turbelson, who will talk to us about our efforts regarding cannabis.
Thank you, Mr. DeLong, and thank you, Mayor and Commission. In July of 2020, the city commission approved the cannabis policy alongside a series of land use policies that allowed for recreational cannabis to operate within the city. Within each of our policy, within each of our policies, every effort was made to embed equity and support the, and support equitable participation in the cannabis industry. Twenty-three out of 31 of the cannabis facilities operating within the city have made some social equity commitments. So this next slide provides a financial snapshot of the cannabis program. So in general, we will see a decline in the revenues for land use, in part due to, due to the decreasing amount of cannabis-eligible land, but also market saturation. We will see an increase in licensing revenues, which will average over a half million dollars. And we will also, you'll note, see a steady increase in estate revenue excise tax that will be coming back to the city. The amount of tax revenue we'll receive is a formula that utilizes statewide sales divided by the number of cannabis retail facilities within each municipality. So the expenditures largely result from staff time. You'll recall that in 2020, the city hired a cannabis manager, Al Romero Gibbo, who supports the cannabis program and ensures that all of the ordinances and all of the equity commitments are going to be adhered to. The remaining efforts will help support the efforts outlined in the Social Equity Policy and other city initiatives. Next slide. So this slide provides a status on the number of facilities that are in operation today. So it's important to note that these numbers are not additive. It's meant to be seeing how many medical facilities and how many recreational facilities. But in most of the cases, they are one facility operating with two separate licenses. So that meaning that most of the facilities that are in operation will either sell, grow, or process both medical and recreational cannabis in one facility. So in case you're wondering, we do have a total of 14 facilities that are currently in operation. And again, many of which have multiple licenses. Next slide. So this slide provides another comparative look between the number of land use approvals that have been granted compared to the number of licenses that have been issued to date. So you'll see, you'll see that we still have a number of operators that are working their way through the various stages of either construction permitting and/or the licensing process. Next slide. So an added layer of interest for us is the fact that the state and city fiscal years do not align. The state excise tax is based on the state's timeline. So we can begin expecting to see our local share in fiscal year '22, roughly March, we anticipate. So as a little fun fact, that for the state's fiscal year 2020, per establishment payment was $28,000 for each retail facility that was operating in the state of Michigan. So there's a few Horizon issues that we're tracking here. First, we're beginning to see some compliance challenges emerging in both the local ownership and supplier diversity categories. But we are developing an administrative policy that will help us navigate those challenges equitably. Out of the 31 recreational cannabis facility or applicants, pardon me, we had one applicant that qualified as an equity applicant. The majority of the potential applicants have expressed financial challenges in their efforts to obtain licensing. But we do believe that the Social Equity Fund could serve as a. could serve as a potential countermeasure to that, to those challenges. We are also seeing a trend in the medical facilities that are transitioning to fully recreational. This would mean less licensing revenue for the city, but it also probably means a likely increase in the state excise revenue that would be returned back to the city. You may recall that the state's cannabis rules allowed for special licensing types, including marijuana events and designated consumption establishments. Staff is currently working on an analysis of those future uses with a strong focus on business participation of equity applicants and local resident ownership. And our last horizon issue that we wanted to bring forward is just the understanding the amount of cannabis-eligible land is limited. Most of the land that is eligible is located in our industrial zone districts, which would require a grower or processor component. But recall the changes that were made both back in 2020. We did open up a significant, significant amount of land, relatively speaking, of course, that is still available for microbusinesses that can operate in several of the city's own districts. So the Cannabis Justice Work Group is developing a framework for the establishment of a new nonprofit. And that nonprofit will be established to empower under-resourced communities by implementing equity-driven investment strategies, which the city cannot do due to restrictions of the use of public funds. So the nonprofit would be capitalized by the state, capitalized in part by the state's shared excise revenue as well as participation by the local industry. So the proposed fiscal year '22 budget includes professional services that would help us establish that nonprofit. And we look forward to bringing that forward to the City Commission in the near future. So thank you, Mayor and Commission, for the opportunity to update you on the city's cannabis program. And I will turn it back over to the City Manager.
Thank you, Ms. Turbelson. Mayor, I think we're at the point we can pause for questions.
All righty. And City Manager, just to confirm, that's the last presentation we have, right?
That is correct, Mayor.
Okay, all right. I'm like, I know we still have executive session to go back into, but I didn't know if we had to pause and have more discussion on any of these topics. So I, Commissioners, I'll just say, thank you for these presentations. Very detailed and thorough. There's a lot that we should be proud of that we've worked on. And seeing the numbers before us today in these updates, it's really encouraging, and I appreciate all the work that went into it. So I'll turn to my colleagues just for questions or comments. Commissioner Moody, good to have you back. All right, Commissioners, questions or comments? Commissioner Jones?
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you to all who made the presentations this round. I appreciate what was presented around economic resiliency and recovery work groups. I continue to look for ways in which we can fund or support our neighborhood associations, especially for such a time as this, in their efforts to continue to do the work that they've been called to, to get people back out and engage in community. And anything that we can do to, again, provide additional dollars to neighborhood associations would be greatly appreciated. And I've said before, also wanting to do all that we can to make sure that we're intentional in helping to create even new neighborhood associations throughout the city. I often have the opportunity to brag about the neighborhood associations that we have in the second ward, very active, they cover a lot of territory, and just have had a really good, solid track record in terms of engaging the neighbors. And I would love to see it to where every ward has that opportunity for coverage and engagement. And so my hope is that we would continue to find ways to have every neighborhood who desires to be, to have a neighborhood association, to get that opportunity. I also want to, want to state a couple of things publicly. And this is just my humble opinion. I know that we've, I have seen a number of remarks or commentary that's been made regarding what is seen as the inequity around cannabis ownership opportunities in our city. And I just want to say, again, this is just my opinion. The, the industry itself was not set up to be a benefit to ownership for African-American Latinx folk. And so I know that there are those who feel very strongly that perhaps we're not doing all that we can as a city. But my response would be that, I think, from the very beginning, as it was being legalized and the opportunities were being created, it did not have in mind how it would benefit the Black and Brown folk who have, again, historically, it's been albatross around our necks in terms of it being criminalized. And now that it's legal, the absolute liquid dollars that are needed to even, to be in play, to be a business owner, is unrealistic if you look at it through historical lens and understanding that Black and Brown folk and the struggle to actually have or create and develop wealth. And so I don't know how much more we can do legally. I have people who always respond or push for the micro, the microbusiness. I can appreciate that. And I would in no way stand, I would, I would encourage folks to go in that direction. At the same time, wouldn't it be great if there were opportunities that could be provided for Black and Brown folk to tap into something other than a micro opportunity? And so I think for those who are, for the public us listening, please know that the way in which this, the law's written, the legislation is done, again, I won't use the word impossible, but I would say nearly impossible, I think, from the beginning, for folks who are of a darker hue to actually be major players in this space around cannabis. So thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioners, other questions or comments? Commissioner Esasie?
Thank you. I just wanted to, it's on slide 45, the funds available for program. I think this was kind of like last time. So I just want to make sure. So at this point, the $605,000 expect, it's the expected unspent business grant assistance dollars. So that will roll over into this next fiscal year. Is that what I'm understanding correctly from this slide?
I'm sorry. Commissioner, are you referring to the Eris Investment?
Eris Round Two, yeah. Eris Round Two, additional $1.2 million CDBG program.
Right. So, so that includes some things that needed to, that would be reprogrammed. So, so there was 108 grants provided through the Small Business Grant Program. So the funds that were reserved for that program that remain unspent will again get wrapped into that. So although there's $1.2 million of additional funds coming in, that include, that 1.8 million includes those, in essence, reprogrammed funds.
Okay. Thank you.
Commissioner Rappert? I'm sorry, go ahead, Commissioner. Did you have a follow-up question? Sorry about that. Commissioner Rappert?
Yeah, thanks, Mayor. I just have two questions. One is, I think it's the same slide that Commissioner Esasie was just referring to, the kind of the second round of Eris Investments, that $1.2 million. How is that going to be rolled out and communicated? Because I know that there's, even just since last week, I've had a few conversations with people, and they have a lot of questions that I don't have answers to. And then my second question is, you know, so we made the decision to kind of change our relationships with, like, Grab and Hispanic Chamber and those kinds of things. And I'm interested to know a little bit more why, but also, you know, are we, do we have a plan to stay engaged with those entities? And how are we hoping to continue to honor those partnerships with the people that we've worked with for quite a few years?
So in response to the first part of your question, we will be coming to the City Commission asking, we need to have a budget amendment, first of all, for that $1.2 million to actually be appropriated in our community development budget. So even though we have availability of those funds, we have to get it budgeted. And we also need to do a substantial plan amendment. So we will include this into our, our Eris Investment Strategy and post it in terms of that public, making it publicly available. This is continuing on the path of the CARES Act Funds and Process that has a shortened public, public notice period. It's only required to be out and established for five days, unlike the 30-day comment in a typical substantial plan amendment. So this is still following that format where we put, make the investment, plan investments identified, published. And then if, if there's no requirement for a public hearing, but of course, if anyone wants to provide any comments about that, we take that into consideration as well.
And then, Commissioner, I'd like to follow up on Mrs. Bahatch's explanation. If you recall, last week during the presentation, we talked about these investments that would require some type of process, either a purchasing process or RFP process. So there'll be plenty of information out as we are, once we get through the process that Ms. Bahatch described, and into the, either the proposal or the purchasing process, there'll be plenty of information about opportunities to, to get involved in the, in those investments.
Then, then if we could continue the dialogue, Mr. DeLong, found the relationship with some of my ESOs and partners, and just be as transparent as possible about what happened that changed the nature of the relationship and because of the recession and what our efforts were to salvage it and what those opportunities are moving forward.
Yeah. So I would say, thank you, City Manager. I would say that we've never lost touch with those partners, that we've continued to work with them over time. We may have not always communicated as well as we could, but we've, we have strong relationships with them, and we're looking forward to moving forward together. So during the budget last year, it became apparent that resources were constricted and that, that, you know, the pandemic was upon us, and we had a myriad of issues we needed to take care of. And so including establishing the housing fund and some other, other things that we needed to take care of. So we did not renew the contracts for those four entities that are listed on, on slide 47. We did, they stayed in contact with them. And when it came time to do the business grant program, we enrolled some of them to, and actually picked up a couple of other ones to do, so we had a couple drop out, a couple new ones, to do the, the public information and the recruitment for the business grant program. And they were, they earned, they earned a fee and a stipend for that, for their professional services. And also, some of them were also involved in the River Equity Project as well. So it wasn't the same, you know, it was different work. But it was, it was work that, in the area of economic development within our community. So now we have an opportunity to rethink that, to know what, we know we accomplished under the prior program through fiscal '20, and prior programs, I should say, and understand their value. And so that's why we've now made the recommendation that this would be an excellent use of ARPA money to begin not only re-establishing those concierge services in terms of a relationship with these, these parties and perhaps others, but also look at other types of investments we could make to help facilitate economic development within our corridor improvement authorities. So one of the ideas, for example, that we had, actually came out of the Third Ward Act program, was either loan guarantees or some type of loan facility. And we, we could not find a way to implement that. So that money was rolled over into the BRIP program. But I'm, I'm interested in whether we can find a way to get that done, you know, working through perhaps the Social Equity Fund or in another way to help, help, help with small business loans to get things going. So that's why we made the recommendation. It's, it's time to consider restoring that.
Okay. Thanks so much. Appreciate it.
You're welcome.
All right, Commissioners, other questions or comments? All right, then we'll go ahead and finish up this budget review workshop. We do have public comments today as a part of this. And then we'll adjourn this workshop, and then I'll ask for a motion to go back into executive session. Probably shouldn't be, but another 20, 25 minutes in executive session, and then we'll finish up and be back together tonight at 7:00. So I will open it up for public comment. So if anyone is wishing to be heard, you can call 456-3000 or 311. And let's see, who is, is it Doug that is helping with that today?
Yes, ma'am, it's Doug.
I got it. Do we have anyone who wishes to be heard?
Right now, there are no callers in the queue.
Okay, I'll just wait, I'll just wait a few seconds. Maybe, maybe during this time that we wait to see if anyone calls in, I'll go ahead and call for a motion to go back into executive session. Can I get a motion to go back into executive session?
Hello? Court, court.
All right, moved and supported. I'll go through and do a voice vote. Commissioner Rappert?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Connor?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes, I should have returned.
All right, Commissioner Esasie?
Yes.
Commissioner Moody?
Yes.
And Commissioner Lanier?
Hi. Thank you. And that will be, again, to finish up our conversation about some legal opinions. City Manager?
If we're still filling time, Mayor, I do have a couple of remarks I'd like to add before we close.
Sure. Yep, go ahead, City Manager.
Okay. Thank you again. I want to thank the staff for their work and just kind of next steps in the process. Your next meeting is on the 18th, our next work session. And what we'll do, we'll follow up with any questions that we have yet to answer in writing or in public. And that will be your opportunity to deliberate, provide additional feedback, and as well on the 20th, which will be the day that we are anticipating a vote by the commission. So at this point, we are, other than the questions that have been asked, we are not going to bring forth any new items for briefing on the 18th.
Thank you, City Manager. All right, Doug, anyone in the queue?
Sorry, I was talking on the, no, no, there are, there are no callers in the queue.
Okay, I'll close that opportunity for public comment, then. We'll go ahead and adjourn this budget workshop. Again, I just want to thank all the staff who's worked hard to bring all this information before us. There's a lot of, a lot of things in these presentations we should be celebrating, you know, especially the information that Ms. Bohat shared about the amount of money we'll have to go towards housing. You know, when you look at that number, it's almost $100 million. So we have a lot of work we have before us. We know it's a big issue, but there's fortunately some federal support to help us address a lot of these complex issues that we've been working on for years. So with that, we'll go ahead and end our budget workshop. Commissioners, why don't we take a quick five-minute break and then go into executive session at like 3, 3:10? All right, thanks.